I'm going to call the Finance Committee to order. Today is September 8th, 2020. And we just wanted to get ahead of the budget just a little bit. I know our Controller and Administration has been working very hard on the budget for 2021 year. And we just wanted to get ahead of that a little bit. This year being an unusual year, 2021, also in 2022, going to be impacted by this. I know our Administration staff has been working very hard on that. I wanted to open this meeting. I was wondering if Controller Fenwick could come forward and just give us an idea of what 2021 looks like and if anything going on at the State House may impact 2021 or 2022.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you, and we look forward to introducing the full budget tonight at the Council meeting. With that, you will get, similar to years past, the full budget book, plus we'll play a video that provides an overview of kind of what we're thinking for 2021. Excuse me, plus a Citizens Guide as well, which kind of, I think, breaks it down to a pretty high level. But generally, our approach for 2021 was cautious. And cautious just due to the uncertainty primarily around four things that I've been, wouldn't say concerned with, just their issues. The first one is the Street Department. So, the Street Department's funding is virtually reliant on the gas tax. And obviously, when the pandemic began in March, there were very little cars on the road, so people weren't flying gas like they would have been a year ago. So, year over year, or at least year-to-date, the Street Department's funding's down about $300,000. It's still on the decline. It's declined less than previous months, but it's still down. And so, obviously, road, you know, traffic on the roads has picked up. I'm not a traffic expert, but it doesn't appear that you're stuck on 465 or 69 like you might have been. So, gas tax is still a concern. The next area of concern is the local income tax. So, the income tax that we're receiving this year is from collections from the year 2018. So, what we should receive next year are collections from last year, which arguably could be better than what we're receiving this year. And then in 2022 is when we'll receive collections from this year, which arguably ought to fall off some kind of a cliff. There's not been a whole lot of guidance right now from the state what to do in that area. The latest I had saw was that they would have additional guidance out in October or November, but they recommended a 10% reduction for next year in income tax revenue. My hope is they're planning to smooth that cliff, so if you take a reduction next year, they will hold some of the collections in reserve to then, you know, mitigate that impact in '22. But at this point, we don't know. The third area of concern is our EMS fund. Similarly to the Street Department, revenue is down year-over-year about $200,000. It's still down on a month-to-month basis, probably less down, so to speak, but still down. So, that was another area of concern. And then the fourth was property taxes. And that one needs an asterisk because the property taxes that we received for the spring settlement were down, I think it was about 7% versus last year. But there was also an extension of the, effectively, an extension of the payment deadline for spring taxes to July. So, if you paid in July, you didn't know a penalty. Escrowed property taxes, you know, automatically got paid in the spring settlement in June, but non-escrow payers had the ability to defer that until July. So, we will get that money. We will get it this year, but we don't know from a delinquency standpoint where we stand. So, that's a bit of a wild card. I'm personally not overly concerned with the property tax, even if we're slightly down year-over-year. I think that's a manageable number. So, those are the four main revenue areas that I was concerned with as we head in to the 2021 budget. Not knowing when those will turn around, or at least get back to normal, could be by the end of the year, may not, could be sometime next year. Hence why we determined to take a fairly conservative approach for budgeting for next year, which is why overall, the budget's down about 4.2%, which is, equates to about $2 million.
That year-over-year, you're talking?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Controller Fenwick, Chair?
Yeah, please.
So, EMS is down $200,000 year-to-date? So, what's the projection conservatively? Yeah, for the year?
$350,000.
Okay.
Now, the other, which again, why we took a conservative approach for next year, we have applied for Phase 1 of a reimbursement under the CARES Act, and the total amount of our first request was about $450,000 plus or minus $1,000. All of that was EMS-related. So, if we get all of it, or hopefully, we get all of it, but if we get a substantial portion of that, that is all for the benefit of EMS. And the way the CARES Act, at least according to the State Board of Accounts, it's an expenditure reimbursement. So, it's not a revenue replacement, it's an expenditure reimbursement. So, if we get what we requested for the EMS fund, we are to then put that in a separate grant fund designated, you know, COVID-19, blah, blah, blah. And then we can do effectively expense reimbursements from the EMS fund to that grant fund. So, if that happens, you know, next year, or when we find out, we could always bring then an additional appropriation if we needed something out of the EMS fund, because that effectively frees up $450,000 of revenue that would have been in the EMS fund by moving that expense over. But again, I have no idea, you know, I think I'd mentioned at a previous, either Council meeting or Finance meeting, I think it was back in June or July, we received, this is in June, we received $35,000 in our bank account. It took us about two days to figure out why we got $35,000, because we had no notice, no email. It was an EMS provider reimbursement under the CARES Act. And that was actually supposedly a revenue loss replacement. So, then we get another email saying we're eligible for Round 2. And it's, again, revenue loss, and this was a different CARES Act program. So, we documented and justified right around $200,000 at the time for revenue loss, sent it in, and didn't get a notification either way that we've been approved. And then about two weeks later, we got about $1,200. So, we put in for $200,000 and got $1,200. But the, this $450,000 that we've applied for is our allocation that Indianapolis received. If I, if you remember, we talked again a couple of meetings ago, because Indianapolis' population is north of a half a million, they received a direct infusion under the CARES Act for about 160-some-odd million. And the state of Indiana got 300 million. So, the state of Indiana allocated their 300 million to all the counties and political subdivisions but Marion County, because they had 163 million, I think, directly. Indianapolis then claims they had 100 and, I think it was 160 million directly to Indy, and then about 12 million to all the varying other political subdivisions. Our share of that was about 700,000. So, that, it's technically our reimbursements, so we've had to submit the documentation, et cetera. But based on population, if, you know, in Marion County, our allocation should have been closer to 5 or 6 million, not 700,000.
So, Jason, I want to go back to this first disbursement that showed up in the account and didn't, nobody in your office initiated it like you would say under the PPP Act where you had to apply? And so, how, what triggered that mechanism? And then, why did you apply for the second time when you didn't for the first?
I think the first one was kind of similar to what the federal government did to cities with a population north of a half million. They just wired the money out, no questions asked. So, I think if you were in an ambulance provider, and I don't know how they would have determined the initial amount, they just wired that money out. And we literally did not have any notifications or, hey, sign up by this date and, you know, you'll get x. But we did get the email about Round 2.
Okay.
Which, you know, had a very good batting average.
Yeah, interesting. Okay. Well, I'll let you finish.
So, I was going to ask a question about the 400, you say 450,000?
Yes.
So, is that 450,000 of the 700,000?
Yes.
So, we're still going to try to document and submit for another 250?
We fully intend to go after the full amount, yes.
So, help me understand if, if, you know, second-class cities or other subdivisions were allocated 12 million. Is that what you said, 12 million?
I think it's roughly.
Ever take?
Yeah.
So, how did they come up with the 700,000? And was there anyone, any other subdivision or second-class city that got more than we did?
Well, we would have, we would have gotten the largest in Marion County for non-Indianapolis towns or cities, if you will.
Okay, okay.
A question on the property tax. Do you think that's going to be in this year, like December? Because you said they focused that up till July to pay for it.
So, there've been two indications. The initial one was we would, we would receive it when we get the fall settlement, which is the final settlement in December. And there was a second communication, this has been at least six weeks, two months ago, that there was a possibility of getting the July payments in September. So, I haven't seen anything else since. I've been banking on getting it in December. But like I said, you know, I think, you know, what has been paid, we will get. The only thing that was frustrating for me was usually in a non, in a normal year, when we get the spring settlement, we immediately can tell, all right, year-over-year, we're up, down, whatever, and then have a better sense of delinquencies. And we don't have that right now. So, until we get that, the spring delinquencies is kind of unknown, which I would expect there to be some, but I don't think it's going to be significant.
So, you think we can absorb it? So, what do you think worst-case scenario is, if you already have come to the conclusion that we can absorb it?
Worst-case scenario is the income tax, and I think the income tax being down substantially, like 20%, 25%, that's the worst case.
Okay.
Wouldn't you expect on the property tax, given what has happened over the last year with assessments going through the roof, that it will mitigate?
Yeah.
Maybe some of that, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
And the good news is, as well, the state always sets the allowable growth quotient.
Yeah.
You know, they basically tell us how much we can raise the AV in any budget year. And the last three or four years, it's been plus or minus 3%. And for next year, I think it's 4.1 or 4.3. So, they have recognized that in allowing us to raise the AV growth. And so far, you know, what I did budget 2021 in property taxes is, all things being equal, up relative to what, you know, could be worst-case for '21 or 2020.
Jason, you mentioned at the beginning about the Street Department funding being down by 300,000. So, as a result, did projects just not go off, that we just sidelined them, or kind of walk, walk us through what we did to mitigate that?
So, we, we didn't defer anything this year, in part because we applied for the million-dollar match.
Oh, that's right.
Community crossings program, and that was earlier in the year, and we did receive the full million-dollar allocation. So, had we deferred that, we'd be paying a million dollars back, or at least returning a million dollars.
Okay.
The main impact on the Street Department and the proposed 2021 budget will be that area paving. I think we have a belief that community crossings is likely to, at a minimum, be scaled back significantly, if not deferred for a year. If that happens, we would rather keep our firepower so that if it is back in full force in '22, we can go out and apply for a full matching grant to leverage those dollars. So, the only, in my opinion, the real area of cutting back, so to speak, in the Street Department is for paving. That being said, we've allocated money for strip patching, which, you know, has done wonders in certain areas and is just as good as full-on paving, sidewalk repair and maintenance. So, it's not as if we've said to the Street Department, hey, you know, take next year off and we'll see you in, you know, '22. They're definitely going to have enough funding to be, you know, extremely busy. The main area that we cut back on was full-on paving. And I should also mention that across the board, there was no thought about personnel cuts. So, I mean, we haven't changed any of that, and I think other communities are unfortunately probably not going to experience, you know, keeping the status quo from a personnel standpoint.
I, Jason, I know you're going to bring the budget to us in the next meeting, so I didn't want to jump too far ahead, but I wanted to take this time. My concern is an area that, you know, you and I discussed and keeps you up at night, you used to tell me, is our fund for retirement. I don't want to call it the non-reverting fund, because we didn't pass that, but, you know, so I want to make sure in this 2021 budget, I'm sorry, fogging my glasses up with this thing, in this 2021 budget, do we have some funds to allocate to that?
We have funds allocated in the '21 budget to fund any potential retirements that could occur in '21. We're not aware of anything significant, so if there are no significant retirements, what would be left in those budget line items would be enough to contribute to the, to the fund. So, in other words, if we get a rash of three or four unexpected retirements, that money is gone, it'll pay for that. But based on what we know today, there would be excess left there to contribute to that fund.
But if I remember right, in years past, we've, we've had money to take care of present and then put a little bit up for the future. This year, we'll be able to cover present, but not be in a position to put necessarily some up unless you have some extra.
I would say, we, based on what we know today, we, we will be able to cover the present and should be able to.
Put a little bit of.
Aside for the future. But again, if we get hit with some unexpected retirements, which we have in the past, because there's no obligation for an employee, in fact, you know, employees, I'm sure in March may not think they're retiring, and then come June, they are, so.
Jason, do you anticipate the possibility of going to warrants for this property tax?
No.
Okay.
We're good there.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other thing, I mean, I know we're getting a little ahead of it, but I haven't seen a salary ordinance yet, and.
So, our plan on the salary ordinance was we did increase the civil city employee ordinance and the public safety ordinance by 5%. However, we did not fund the 5% in the 2021 budget. Reason we increased it 5% is if we don't increase, you know, if we keep it flat, and then let's say, late first quarter, early second quarter, you know, hey, you know, this kind of worst-case scenario didn't transpire, things are on the upswing, and by the way, based on that, we can, we can afford the 5%. We can bring an additional appropriation request to the council, and if the council approves it, we can then fund the 5%. But if we don't include it in the ordinance, salary ordinance now, we can't raise it after it's passed. So, next year, if we don't raise it, then we'd be saying, no raises, period. What we're asking is to have the flexibility that if the funding revenues turn around and we determine we can fund it and sustain it, we're certainly not going to authorize it and pay it without that additional appropriation request first. So, the council would be the first to know with that ask, like, hey, we think we can do this. But for now, if we don't include it in the salary ordinance, we can't do anything next year.
What's that 5% amount to total dollar-wise?
Um.
Approximately?
Approximately, probably 800, 900,000.
Oh, way more than that.
Any more questions for Controller Fenwick?
Yeah, I got one more. When are you going to publish this budget?
Um, so, what we talked about at a previous meeting, and I don't know if it's been scheduled yet, but once we introduce it tonight, then I would like to have a Finance meeting soon thereafter to then discuss. We had kind of penciled in the 16th of September for that Finance meeting. Based on that, the publication of the notice would be the 23rd. In order to meet the public hearing on the 5th, I think we might have a couple of days of flexibility on that. But for now, I'd, if we have the Finance meeting next week, then publish the week after that. Right now, we haven't done anything.
And that date is what we're shooting for?
16th, okay.
We'll find out in the next meeting. So, let me get ahead of another, their question. So, we've always operated with the reserve, the 20% reserve, and then we have, I don't know, lack of a better name, but that operational reserve that's on top of that. Instead of eating into cuts in different budget lines, why, why not draw that down instead?
We have drawn some of that down in the, for the '21 budget. I know, Mr. Denny, you and I had a conversation early on about the Controller's Office budget that's in the General Fund. That's tended to be where we've put the one-time expenditures in there. And so, even though that's down year-over-year with what we're proposing, there are still some one-time expenditures in there. We still have, until energy savings is fully implemented throughout the city, we still have to pay that debt service before the savings are realized, so that's in there. We did allocate, we had a next-level trail grant that we applied for earlier in the year that would have connected 63rd down to Lee Road into the Fort. That kind of, that program got deferred, or application is still in there, so I have funding in there in case it's reincarnated next year and we get our proportionate share. We allocated some additional funding into DPW, because coming soon will be a revamp of licensing and permitting, and that'll kind of, this funding is needed for us to do that. And then, because of the concern with the income tax and the public safety tax fund, I did move some of the police and fire expenditures from public safety tax to general fund as a kind of a one, hopefully, two-year measure in order to get through the, whatever the drop is in the income tax. So, so far, that's where some of that reserve has gone. We also didn't want to completely kind of drain down that excess, if you will, because we just don't know when, you know, when the tide will turn. So, if next year ends up not being good and it's worse than we think right now, we still wanted to have some capacity that if we needed to use it again for the 2022 budget. So, again, just trying to take a cautionary approach. So, we have used some of it, there's still some to use. We didn't want to, you know, just fully say, hey, let's spend it all for next year, and then if we get into next year and it's not as great, then we're kind of like, all right, there's work to do.
To get a better understanding, we've always talked about that money kind of two different ways. Sometimes we talk about it in a hard-dollar amount, sometimes we talk about it in a percentage amount. I know 20% was our threshold that we were trying to meet as our reserve, and then we were over that. It was like, what, 23%? I think that we were kind of at?
Yeah, we were a little higher than that.
A little higher?
Around 30.
Oh, we were 30?
End of, end of last year, yeah.
I didn't know that. Okay, okay. So, where are we at, with this drawdown that you're speaking of, where do you feel like you're going to be at?
With what we have proposed, we're drawing, we're still leaving above the 20%.
Mm-hmm.
Let me find the.
Oh, it's in the proposal.
We will still be leaving about 1.3 million above the 20%.
Okay.
So, we've withdrawn some of that down, still leaving a million three, such that even if next year is worse than what we think, we could use the million three and still not hit our 20%.
Right, that's what I wanted.
It's always been the goal is, you know, if we can, let's not even dip into the 20% because to the tax warrant point as well, if we dip below the 20%, then we're going to have to do short-term borrowing to fund.
Right.
The cash flow throughout the year, which obviously, there's interest, and it just.
Right.
But, you know, so far, we won't have to do that.
Good.
Jason, several years ago, the topic of the pilot used to be a pretty common conversation about every meeting we had. And quite honestly, I haven't really thought much about it until this conversation tonight. But one of the things that I remember that I was trying to get some support is allocating some of those expenses that are incurred by your department or the city government, where you're doing work on behalf of the utility, because as a controller, you're kind of, the same with the mayor. Can you, it may not be necessarily germane to this conversation, but I think it does play a part in the overall budget. Can you kind of update us on where that pilot stands? Because I thought that there was, there was some language or something in there that it was either going to be increased or, yeah, just give me a.
So, the, back in 2017, when we adopted the water rate schedule and then a new water bond ordinance, prior to 2017, effectively, it was a contracted payment. And so, in the, both of those ordinances in '17, it switched it to a pilot, which is based on the NAV effectively of the water utility. And so, at the time in 2017, had the utility not done anything in terms of capital improvements, that pilot arguably would have been flat, or maybe slightly up based on our tax rate. Well, Water Utility did Phase 1 of the capital improvements, which added about nine or 10 in AV, based on all the new assets with Rich Heart Water Treatment Plant and, you know, new, refurbished tank, et cetera. And then the utility has been embarking this summer on Phase 2, which is about another 13 million. So, I guess from a good news standpoint, the utility's net asset value is going up.
Okay.
Therefore, that pilot to the city will be going up based on that calculation.
All right, thank you for reminding, yeah, all right.
Any further questions, Controller? Well, thank you for coming tonight and giving us a little bit of a preview of the budget. I really appreciate that. And I know you're going to be presenting the full thing within the next hour, but it's really helped us to get ahead of what you're about to present, and.
You're welcome. And like I said, everybody will receiving this full budget book tonight, Citizens Guide, which we will have extra copies if, you know, you need some in the future. And then, we also wanted to, for some of the, that haven't gotten one, we'll hand out, we have City of Warrants masks as well.
I wanted one of those.
It's on my.
So, can I, I have one more question.
Yes, please.
So, for the EMS fund and for 2021, do we think that's going to, are we predicting that that's going to continue to be on the decline the first couple quarters of 2021?
You know, it's hard to say. I would think not barring any additional COVID upticks, et cetera. But, you know, it's such a wild card, because some of it's depended on the economy, whether people have jobs, you know, just, there are a lot of variables there. So, I don't know if I have a real handle, other than to say, I think it'll be, it'll return to norm, somewhat normal.
So, is, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, are we, do we have a reduction reflected in 2021, or is it pretty much the same as 2020?
We, we definitely have a reduction on the expenditure side. Now, part of that is a net overall reduction for fire. What I did for EMS was move some of the debt service on equipment out of the EMS fund into the capital improvement fund, again, to kind of bridge this gap. But in terms of what I budgeted, I believe I budgeted flat from what we should have gotten this year for the pandemic. what we should have gotten this year for the pandemic.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, I think we would agree, go ahead and schedule it then for next Wednesday, the 16th, at 5:30 would be our next finance meeting.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.